Two buds ago.
What's that?
Two buds ago.
Welcome to the June 24th, 2024 meeting of the Sandusky City Commission. An invitation offered by Commissioner Waddington followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
God our Father, as we gather for the meeting this evening, give us the guidance and wisdom to make the proper decisions. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Myers, you call the roll.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Crable?
Here.
Ms. Fargo?
Here.
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Bajali?
Here.
Mr. Kuntz?
Here.
Commissioners, you have before you the minutes of our June the 10th, 2024 meeting. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes of the meeting and dispense with the formal reading.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Any residents with comments regarding tonight's agenda, please step to the podium and share with us your name, address, and your agenda comments. I would ask you to keep them to three minutes. Commissioners, you have before you several communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation. Can I have a motion to accept those communications?
So moved.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Without objection?
Mr. Chairman, do we have to approve the minutes from the special meeting?
We do.
Okay.
We have a special meeting that occurred on what date?
June 15th.
June 15th, a Saturday. May I have a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Without objection? In hearing no objection, both of those sets of minutes will be approved. Commissioners, we have two items on the consent agenda this evening. Do any of you wish to move either of those items to a regular agenda? If not, Ms. Myers, we present the consent agenda.
Item A, approval of Office 365 Annual Agreement Renewal 2024 with Insight Public Sector. Item B, approval of Software House Support with Johnson Controls.
Commissioners, having heard these ordinances, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington?
I move that Items A and B, I move for the adoption of these ordinances under suspension of rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call the roll on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Crable?
Aye.
Ms. Fargo?
Aye.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Kuntz?
Yes.
That motion is passed. Ms. Myers, will you call the roll on the ordinances now?
Mr. Crable?
Aye.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Kuntz?
Yes.
Those ordinances are passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number one, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing all actions necessary to affect a governmental national gas, natural gas aggregation program with the opt-out provisions pursuant to Section 4929 dot 26 of the Ohio Revised Code and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Kuntz?
Move for approval of this ordinance under suspension of the rules of Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. I know we have a gentleman representing this piece of legislation in the audience. If Commissioners have any questions regarding either Item One or the companion item number two, I know that he is prepared to answer any questions for you, and I believe he may even have a handout for us. Any questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Murray?
I know the electric gas aggregation, or electric aggregation program has worked very well for the citizens for a lot of years. I occasionally take a look at what those prices are compared to Ohio Edison's, and they've been quite favorable, is my recollection. I don't suppose that we have any way of knowing what our total, what the community's total savings have been, or what the city's total savings have been, but I think it's probably been substantial. And then I noted that this was, for some years, an opt-in program. Apparently, the market no longer wants to offer opt-in programs. They want to offer an opt-out program, which is fine, because everyone has the right to opt out, and because the voters will have to approve this in the fall.
This is correct. I'll let the gentleman speak to that issue and share with us a handout, too.
Yes. Good evening. Tom Bellish from Buckeye Energy Brokers. My address is 66 East Mill Street in Akron. And what I'd like to hand out here is frequently asked questions for natural gas, and on the back is "is electric." I do have some of that. So to answer the question about savings, every penny you save is about $100 a year. So we have 4.6 Yeah, 4.65 cents per kilowatt hour for, right now, in the city's program. Ohio Edison, starting in June, will be 9.29. So that's probably $450 a year savings right there.
Per household.
Per household, yes.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Bajali?
Forgive me for being naive on this topic, but the whole opt-out, opt-in, I didn't realize you had to go to the ballot to vote on those kind of things. I thought you just opted out, and then you opt, you would opt into another program, and...
Yeah, great question. So it was, it was November 2000 when it was on the ballot. So for somebody not to know that, I'm not surprised if everybody was, you know, was around back then. But so it does, electric did go on the ballot and passed, and then natural gas, we, what was wanted at the time was just opt-in, and so we did that. And we had a couple of offers, then we went to one offer, and now that supplier constellation has announced they will not renew this fall. So that was, so through November of 2024. So they've announced they won't renew. We've looked for other suppliers, and there are out there, but they want to do opt-out. So what, now, to be eligible for opt-out, you need to be backed with the local utility. So let the program expire in November, send letters out in February, and then start in April. So this way, the people who want to be in the program will go back to the utility and be eligible, they'll go back to Columbia Gas of Ohio and be eligible, and then letters will be sent, and they'll be picked up into the program.
Thank you. With this program, though, and with the regulations, that the hoops we have to jump through to do this now with the, with being on the ballot, does that mean we're going to miss the entire heating season?
So it goes through December bill. So it'd be January, February, March bill. So yeah, we're gonna miss a few. We're gonna miss a few. Not quite the, we'll catch the fall, through the fall. October, November, December considered winter billing. So we will miss three winter months.
Bad timing.
Yeah. So, but to, to make this transition, it's kind of necessary to those who are in the program to be eligible then. So no letters will go out to anybody under contract. If you're under contract, you won't get a letter.
Okay.
Yeah. So, but they can opt in. It's open, it'll be, be open. And we'll also make sure it's free to opt out, too, if anybody wants to opt out for free.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioner? Thank you. Thank you for the
You very much.
handout and the information.
Appreciate your time.
Ms. Myers, you call the roll on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Crable?
Aye.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Kuntz?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Crable?
Aye.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Kuntz?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number two.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Buckeye Energy Brokers, Incorporated of Akron, Ohio, for professional services related to the city's gas aggregation program and declaring that this ordinance shall take effect under the suspension of the rules as contained in and in accordance with Section 13 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Bajali?
I would move to adopt this ordinance in accordance with Section 13 of the City Charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call the roll on that motion, please.
Mr. Crable?
Aye.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Kuntz?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Kuntz?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number three, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement for professional services with Strand Associates, Incorporated of Cincinnati, Ohio, for the combined sewer system evaluation project and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Waddington?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Murray?
I'm hoping you're gonna call upon Mr. Klein to give us a little bit of background here. I know we've worked with Strand a lot of times over the years. I know they have a lot of information about the city. I know we've been investing heavily as required by the EPA and in furtherance of the health of Lake Erie and Sandusky Bay. We've been investing heavily in the sewer treatment plant. We are seeing more significant storm events, changes in our weather, and we've had experience, we've experienced some flooding in people's basements. I see one gentleman here who's experienced it. My son is not, lives not so far away from that, and he's experienced it. So I'm glad there's some attention being given to this. But I wonder if we might just have a little bit of context for Mr. Klein.
Mr. Klein?
Yes, sir. Through the Commission President, what we are looking to do on this one is kind of piggyback stuff that we've done in the past. We've really looked at a lot of wet weather conditions with the increase in rain events that we've had and the significant rain events that we've had. Those have been really bad, causing those basement backups. What we're looking at doing in this one is looking at dry weather, which is more inflow and infiltration. So what happens is, is when there's dry weather, when that flow is getting in, and then we get those significant rain events, there's less capacity in the sewer system for the rain event, for the sewer system to handle that wet weather, to handle that rain event. So what we're looking at doing here is we're looking at taking those, those INI, inflow and infiltration, getting those out of the system as best we can. We've done a lot of lining. We've done a lot of overflow elimination, sewer separation, a lot of those projects we've done over the past several years. We're setting up projects, and I'll use Monroe Street as an example, where from Mills Creek, going back, and then going back, and then going back, and we're going all the way, hopefully eventually, to Decatur to do limited separation. That takes time. What we want to do is we want to get out ahead of this. We're still, we understand that we have to start negotiating with EPA in a year or two, and what we want to do is eliminate as much of that dry weather flow as we possibly can before we start negotiating, as well as planning all of those additional sewer separation projects, where we know that the capacities that we have in those systems, in those neighborhoods, really don't match what the rain events that we're getting these days. And we understand that a lot of that INI is coming through those private laterals, coming through from those private side. But we also want to make sure that we're handling the city-owned side as well, ahead of getting out in front of those, those future projects. So what we're looking at doing here is bringing Strand on. They did a sewer model several years ago. They did some wet weather evaluations as well. And because they had that model, we were able to act quickly a couple of years ago, when there was a lot of flooding in the Fifth Street neighborhood, to figure out if there were some valves closed and things like that. And now they're coming in with that model. It should help push things along. What we're gonna also do is install flow meters at various locations and try to chase backwards. We've had our crews doing that already for the past few months. We just don't have enough flow meters to make a dent in following where this flow is coming from. So this is something that we're hoping to move forward with, and we're hoping to move forward with this summer. Obviously, it's been pretty dry recently, so we're hoping to get some more dry weather, so we can make sure that we can do this evaluation properly.
Mr. Klein, what kind of a role does this study play in our negotiations with the EPA, which are going to happen in '25 or '26 on the next set of regulations, or next set of projects that they are asking, gonna ask us to complete to reduce the CSO? Is this, this is a precursor to that? Is that correct?
Yes, it is, Mr. President. What we had before, back in 2014, 15 timeframe, when we were negotiating with them, there was a set of projects that they really wanted us to implement, and it was hundred and some thousand dollars, or hundred and some million dollars. Then there was additional projects for another couple hundred million dollars. And what we did is we were able to scale it back with them and say, hey, look, how about we do this first five projects that are on the list, not these next five, six, seven. In the middle of that, as we're eliminating wet weather overflows throughout the system, what we're going to do is, in the middle of it, would you guys be okay if we did a review of those future projects to see how much we've eliminated the overflows, how much we've reduced the wet weather flows in the system? What we're looking at doing now is, like I said, getting rid of those dry weather flows that will help. When we get the wet weather flows, then we'll have less overflows in the system on that as well. So this is a, not just a precursor for basement backups and everything else. It's really setting us up, if we can find where some of those dry weather flows are. And I think everybody knows that, you know, that there's always been question about certain areas, the boathouses, things like that. So those are areas that we want to confirm if there are issues out there or not, before we actually move forward with doing projects and prioritizing where we're doing those projects and what we're negotiating with EPA in the future. Hopefully, I mean, we'll do everything we can to get those, that next suite of projects as cost-effective and as low as possible. So that's why we're trying to spend this money now, so we can avoid that hundred million or whatever else they're gonna try to ask us to do in the future.
We're all in favor of that.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Verga?
Mr. Klein, so there's no, do you have any guarantee that what we're, when we're spending this kind of money right now, that that's going to impact anything with the EPA? We don't have any guarantee to that, right?
No, we don't. Through the President, we do not have guarantee of what we'll find.
Okay, thank you.
Those are, those numbers are all negotiated, are negotiated at a future, at a future date. Is that correct, Mr. Klein? And based on how we've done in the past, what we project in the future, it seem, they seem like, I think they are preposterous numbers. And, you know, the HRT project that we're undergoing right now is a $30 million project. We're sharing costs with the county on, but that certainly is going to play a significant role in showing a good faith effort, or real effort in reducing CSOs.
Yes, absolutely. And to kind of elaborate on that point, back in the 90s, when we received our first general plan, there were two items that the EPA was looking at. That was to get down to four overflows per year or 80% reduction. We far exceeded that 80% reduction. Well, that or that was in there is no longer in there. So now it's an and.
Yeah.
So now it's four overflows per year. That could be one drop, or that could be millions of gallons. One drop is the same as, on an overflow, as millions of gallons. So we've reduced probably 90 to 95% of the overflow volume, but we still have more than four overflows per year. So depending on how those negotiations go, we're certainly gonna push to look at the percentage rather than the overflow events.
Sure. Thanks, Mr. Klein. Additional comments or questions? Mr. Murray?
Just one, one point that I'd like to make sure the public understands, and not to correct you, but you used, you said what the EPA requests that we do. It's, it's a little bit more definite than that. We are under a consent decree, and I'm looking at Mr. Hastings to confirm this. I think almost every city in the state is under a consent decree with the EPA. So we do what they tell us we have to do, otherwise they have a hammer they bring down on our head. Mr. Klein has been very effective, because he has a data-driven approach. He has a track record that demonstrates that we do what we say we're going to do, and he has a good rapport with the EPA. EPA, it's not a negative confrontational rapport. He's been able to save the city a lot of money, and the ratepayers throughout Erie County a lot of money, by doing green infrastructure projects with the EPA's blessing. So I'm confident that we have the right person in place to negotiate with the EPA. But it is a negotiation in which they have a hammer that we don't have. They do have, they do have, importantly, they have some calculations. I've forgotten exactly how it works, Mr. Klein, but there is a service, debt service limitation or rate limitation per capita, per income capita. And so they are restricted by their, they do restrict themselves to pushing too many projects on us based upon the relative prosperity or income of the community. So that makes a difference as well. Just some comments.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioner?
Mr. President?
Mr. Crable?
I'm glad to see this being done. We need to be collecting as much data, baseline data as we possibly can. Just, just a quick question. Is, are we actually operating under a consent decree? I know Mr. Murray said that, but I think I've heard you say in the past, it's technically not that.
Yeah. Through the Commission President, I don't know what the exact terminology of a consent decree is. What I can say is that, as we were going through the negotiations in the past, the EPA, Ohio EPA has been great to work with for us. They've been really good. I will say that. I want to make that clear, that we've had a great relationship with them. And so what they offered to do was incorporate this into our NPDES permit There you go. rather than issuing other findings and orders and, you know, something with a little bit heavier of a hammer. So it's now included in our operating permit of the wastewater plant. But I don't know if we technically have a consent decree, because the one that was issued back in '98, I don't know if it's still valid or not valid. I don't know what the status of that is. So...
Yeah. If I may.
Mr. Crable?
But I am, I am very pleased to see that this is being proposed at this point, and we have an opportunity to move forward on this. Because it, in the next couple of years, it's a critically important matter, not just for us, but for others. I mean, the county shares in these costs, and it's a critically important thing for them, for example. And it is, it has the potential to be the single largest expenditure of funds the city has ever seen. And I don't know how, you know, if, unless we can, you know, talk some of this back and, you know, get a, get a different outcome from the Ohio EPA, I don't know how we afford it. So, just making that comment.
Mr. Klein, maybe you can give us some historical precedence of where we were prior to this and how you've negotiated this number down from X to Y. Do you have some historical, I mean, I'm not trying to put, maybe you know those figures, maybe you don't, but I think it's been substantial.
I apologize. Are you talking financial numbers?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Yes, then the plant expansion, in the original decree, there were several requirements, and sewer separation, two plant expansions, quite a bit of requirements. A lot of those loans were 20-year loans, and they're actually coming off of the books. And that's how that HRT project is able to be afforded at this time, because those projects are coming off the books. As we go through this process, what will end up happening is they'll either say, we want to see the old suite of projects and submit those again, or go back and reevaluate, and then the city can come up with our own projects that we recommend to them. And, you know, at that point, if that's the case, then anything would be at play. We can look at green infrastructure. We can look at a lot of those things. But, yeah, the original, as part of that process, there would have to be financial evaluations. And what Commissioner Murray was referring to previously was that the EPA looks at what's called the median household income, and they look at a percent, and they don't want, it's a guide of not being over 3% of the median household income on sewer and 3% on water. We try to stay well below that. We're currently well below that. So we're gonna try to make sure that we stay as low as possible through that process, but we are still below that. So I don't know if that answered the question.
Well, I guess the point I'm making is, the EPA shows up with a wish list of, let's just say, $100 million worth of projects. They don't, they can't possibly expect us to charge our ratepayers $3,500 a month for their sewer and water bill, because that's what it would take to cover the $100 million expenditure. That's, I mean, they may have a hammer, but they'd have to hammer every municipality and every city in the United States to make that happen, and make us all go broke at the same time.
Yes, that is true. And I would rely on Mr. Hastings' hammer more than mine in those parts of the discussions.
Like whack-a-mole.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Murray?
I thank Mr. Klein and Mr. Crable for the correction. I do remember which law director it was that told me we were still under a consent decree. We'll invite him back to a future meeting, and I'll flog him then.
Excellent. Additional comments or questions? Ms. Myers, you pull the commission on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Crable?
Aye.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Kuntz?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Kuntz?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number four, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into amendment to the agreement for professional design services with Environmental Design Group, LLC of Akron, Ohio, for the landing project and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Waddington?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion.
I don't, I don't know if this is
Mr. Crable?
I'm sorry. I don't know if this is the appropriate time to bring this up, so I'm open to being instructed on that. I've had concerns for a while now about the costs involved in the landing project, and I'll just use that as a general term. And I think it's been wonderful to see money that is coming out of Columbus, you know, maybe out of the capital budget or what have you, for, for this project. But I guess my hope is that we can look at this project with, with an eye toward paring back the total amount of money that we're gonna spend on this. It's a lot of money. I guess I'm, I'm curious as to, what, you know, is it possible to get an idea of what the funding sources are that are going to support this? I mean, we, we anticipate something being announced, what, next week, maybe, out of Columbus? But is it possible to get some information on that and take a look at, you know, how much of this, the cost of this is going to actually fall on Sandusky taxpayers, on our budget?
I think that's entirely possible. It's always been my concept, maybe more than just a concept, but I think it's always been my understanding that this is not gonna fall as a burden of Sandusky taxpayers. It's not gonna be general fund funded. It's gonna be funded from grants, such as the one we're anticipating receiving next week. It's gonna fall on, part of it is certainly going to be funded by the TIF. A portion, a portion of it is funded by the Cedar Point admissions tax. I don't think that, I don't, at least this commissioner does not intend to spend general fund dollars to prop this project up. And I disagree with you. I think the project is transforming I think the project is transformative. I would not back off an inch on it. I think it is the centerpiece of legislation for this commission, or maybe any commission in the next 50 years to come before us. I think it, they can positively impact both residents, tourists, visitors. I think it will draw people to this community. When, when, let me refresh your memory, if I may. When Sports Force was, was developed, when Sports Force was conceptualized, that property belonged to the metropolitan.
Yeah.
And part of that deal, part of that negotiation was they're giving that property up for us to have some type of an area that would be, that would benefit all of the residents, wildlife, back to nature, access to the, to the water. I think for this commission to walk away from that in any respect, or as you put, to pare it down, I think is a disservice to the residents. I think, I'm optimistic that, I've seen the plans. I would encourage you and all of you to look at the plans and, and to kind of perhaps sit with our, sit with our finance director and let her share with you where the gap exists, what kind of gap there is, and how we intend to fill that gap. This is not all gonna happen in the next six months. I hope it happens in the next six years. If it takes that long to get, to get funding for it, then it'll take that long to get funding for it. But I, you know, I'm optimistic that this, that this project will go forward in the, in the context that it is now.
And, and I am certainly, you know, open and willing to be schooled on this. But I, I would like to see, you know, the total cost of the project is this, and we're funding this, you know, with this grant and this with this grant, and, you know, where's this money coming from? How much is coming out of the TIF? You know, how much money is going into the TIF on an annual basis, those kinds of things? If that could be provided, I would say, not just to me, but to the entire commission, I think that that would be a, a real positive.
Sure. Mr. Murray.
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in on that. We always knew that we had to have a plan, and then the, once we had a plan, we'd be able to attract funding, and we're seeing that work out. We received the major funding from ODOT in order to be able to get the project to this point, and, and that was part and parcel of the county being able to win the bid that it did to make the improvements on Cleveland Road in that area. So those go, those are, those go hand in hand. And I, and I, for one, think this is the most special project that the city will ever be able to accomplish for its residents. I mean, where can you find a 200-year-old city that carves out a new waterfront park? That just doesn't happen. And so I'm, I'm pretty proud of this. The, I, I know that all of us are committed to not spending money that we don't have, and I think we've always known that there might be some choices we would have to make if the funds weren't available at the point in time that we were ready to commence construction. Maybe some of that funding for other pieces comes along later and gets completed later. But we're not going to, I mean, I, there's no way I would vote for any project that's gonna require general revenue fund dollars because that's never what we had envisioned.
Additional comments, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Go.
I don't have a problem moving forward with this particular piece of legislation because I understand that ODOT, they're not very flexible. When they come in, there's certain things you have to do and you have to pay for. I do sometimes wonder about the cost of this project and if, if, when it finally gets to us, if we'll be willing to evaluate it and be fiscally constrained as we move forward. I mean, I, I don't have a problem with the TIF. I don't have a problem with grant dollars or state dollars, but even issue eight funding, that's opportunity lost, right? You could use that for something else. So those are my concerns, but we'll cross that bridge down the road.
I don't think anyone is more, more aware of the inflexibility of government no doubt than you are, Mr. Bajali. You've lived that for about 19 years. Additional comments? Ms. Myers, you call a roll on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Crable.
Hi.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number five.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to approve the first and final change order for work performed by Spear Brothers Incorporated of Sandusky, Ohio, for the Warren Street reconstruction project in the amount of $88,615.88 and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Shaw.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance, resolution under suspension of the rules in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
But a motion and then two seconds. Mr. Klein, this is an opportunity for you to brag about this percentage. Nobody likes change orders with this pretty low percentage.
Yes, Mr. President. And in fact, the percentage actually comes because it was dramatically increased because as we were proceeding with the project, we were in the intersection of East Market as there were a couple houses being built, and we realized that we had no public sewer down East Market for about half a block. So we had to ask the contractor to install a sewer. City did what we could. We bought the pipe and provided it to the contractor, but while they were there, they were able to install that, that couple hundred feet of sewer to accommodate that project. The timing was perfect, that they were already right there, and they had just installed the manhole so they could just turn and go, and it was, it was good. So that percentage is, is low already, but this, it's actually increased because of that error that we had.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Additional comments or questions? I'm going to recuse myself from voting on this issue because my, my kids own one of those lots that they are now accusing me of the city selling them a defective lot. So we've cleared that up, so I will, I will not be voting on the issue.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I do have one other, a question for Mr. Klein. So I'm just curious. I know we have a lot of old maps in the city, and unfortunately, we go underground sometimes and things aren't where they said they were, or they, they're not there apparently sometimes. I'm wondering how we got ourselves in this predicament that we were issuing permits for construction, I presume, for properties that didn't have sewer nearby? And I'm, I'm not blaming you, of course, but I, and today, we use all that GIS information so we know exactly where the valve is and exactly where the pipe is. And so we, we left a really good set of breadcrumbs for people in the future. But any idea how this happened here?
A little bit. I can speak to most likely how we issued the permits. And on a sewer, you see the larger circle on the road, which is the manhole. That's the access for the manhole. In this particular case, there was one, the drawing showed one manhole in the middle of the road and a sewer going in either direction, east and west, down East Market Street. Well, when the houses were being built, the sewer, it's on all our plans, it's on everything that we have, and every time a permit's given out, we don't go out and lift every manhole lid and look in everything. So you just assume that, you know, everything's there because that's the way it's always been. But, and this is the first case that I'm aware of where the sewer actually never was even installed. So it was on the, it was on the prints, on the drawings, and when you looked in it, you actually saw the pipe going to the west as well, but it was capped off. So.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I'm gonna suggest to Mr. Klein that we invite that former engineer back at the same meeting as the former law director.
Flog them both.
We can put him right here and have a caveman.
Does that mean we're excused?
Present company excluded. Additional comments, commissioners? Ms. Myers, you call a roll on that motion.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number six, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to approve the first and final change order for work performed by Miller Cable Company of Greensprings, Ohio, for the Healthy Hayes Safety Improvements Project in the amount of $5,945.34 and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do we should proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bajali.
I would move to adopt this ordinance in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call a roll on that motion, please.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number seven, please.
It is requested a resolution be passed declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed 2024 sidewalk repair, replacement, and grinding project, contract B, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of costs thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Coons.
Move for adoption of this resolution under suspension of the rules of Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
If I recall correctly, this is the balance of the sidewalk repair requests that were on the list at the point in time that we adopted that legislation that you referenced in the communication. And after that point in time, we closed that list. I imagine that's probably been, there probably have been some complaints about that, but I'm wondering if, you know, I'm just wondering how that conversation has gone with, with residents.
Mr. Klein.
Yes, through the Commission President, there are definitely some people that would like to have been on the list. They are not real happy. They feel that sidewalks are the city's responsibility, and that they don't feel that they should have to pay for that in the future. We haven't received a ton of calls, but we, right when it first happened, when that decision was made, we did get quite a few phone calls. My guess is that once they see the contractor out there, there will be some people that say, hey, I was on the list, whether they were or weren't. What we're doing is we're handling all of the ones that were legitimate complaints that were on the list. Some people didn't like the color of their sidewalk and things like that because it didn't match the neighbor's newer sidewalk or something. So we're not gonna do those. We're doing the ones that are safety hazards and safety concerns. So, you know, we, we're hoping that those conversations go down, but I can let the residents know that if they're wondering if they're on the list or not on the list, they can certainly give our office a call and we can talk to them about it.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Just to follow up, I mean, Sandusky's program for sidewalk repair was very unusual. It's a real outlier. We, maybe we have, we've created a false expectation that that's something that the government, that is the government's responsibility. It's not. It's your personal responsibility to take care of your sidewalk, just like it is your personal responsibility to take everything else, take care of everything else on your property. You live in a city, you can expect there are gonna be sidewalks. You take advantage of those sidewalks as a pedestrian, to the extent that you wish to, or are able, I suppose, also. But, you know, it's, it's what you, it's part of what you have to pay for. So it's very unusual, but we've done it. We will continue to do it. I think you've articulated this already. Where it's our tree, where it's a poor choice of a tree, and it causes heaving and safety problems, we'll take care of that. That's on us. We planted the wrong tree in the wrong place, but otherwise, we're just gonna revert to the norm, which every other city in Ohio does.
Additional comments or questions, commissioners?
Mr. President.
Mr. Crable.
If I may, when this project's completed, do you start another list?
No. Mr. Klein.
Through the Commission President, we were given the direction that once the funds were moved in the ARPA, that that list is now canceled and we don't have another list. If, if we are aware that there is, to what Commissioner Murray was referring to, where there's a tree that was planted in the wrong spot and it is causing a safety problem, then we will take those phone calls and we'll add that to a list and do what's needed.
Just, just point forward, that burden falls on the resident.
Yes.
Repairing, replacing sidewalks.
Okay.
Ms. Myers, you call a roll on the motion, please.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
That resolution is passed. This, that concludes our regular agenda, and we'll turn to our city manager for his report.
Good evening, commissioners, audience, and staff. I have a donation from VFW Post 2529, $5,000 apiece to both the Sandusky Fire Department and the Sandusky Police Department. They want to thank Commander Torrey and the members of VFW Post 2529 for their generous and kind donation. Your support of the local community is very much appreciated. If I get a motion to accept that donation.
But a motion and a second discussion. No objection, that motion will be approved. No objection, that motion is approved. Our thanks to the VFW.
The next is an update to the strategic planning process I wanted to give commission and the community. The consultant team has conducted interviews with key staff members, city commissioners, and is working with city leadership. The strategic plan work has also included a review of the city's robust planning work spanning the entire city to better organize and understand initiatives. Last week, the team conducted a working session with the city commission. Updates were provided, and commission members provided key information as additional guidance. We'd like to thank everyone who participated in the recent community survey. The survey aimed to gauge community perspectives, serving as a representative sample set of residents' views. We had 416 participants in the survey. Forty-two percent of their respondents were over 55 years old. Based on participants' locations in the city, we will continue to focus on intentional outreach and connections with all Sanduskeys. Most participants get their information about the city via social media, highlighting the need for increased communication through these platforms. The survey asked residents about their perceptions of where the city prioritizes investments, and their responses support the ongoing anecdotal belief that the city is investing more in the central part of the city than any other portions. As part of the strategic plan process, we are mapping our public investments since the start of the bicentennial plan, and we will be rolling that out in the upcoming weeks. The full results of the survey will be available on our website in the next few weeks. For finance, effective July 1st, the city administration has increased the past due threshold amount to $115 prior to disconnection of water service. Previously, any past due amount balances over $100 was subject to disconnection. For Public Works, the skate park will close on July 8th, so the new Wheels Park contractor can mobilize to begin demolition of the existing skate park. We anticipate the completion of the project to occur by the end of the year. On July 9th, Public Works staff, along with consultants from the EPA, will begin canvassing throughout the city to complete the water service line inventory for all private service lines as mandated by the U.S. EPA. City staff will be wearing shirts with the city seal and have, and have city-issued photo IDs. We encourage residents to fill out the inventory survey at www.cityofsandusky.com/waterlines. If residents complete the survey online, staff will not visit their addresses during the canvassing. And lastly, Jobs, Ohio has increased their offer to the city for the West Monroe Street project in 2025 from $650,000 to $842,262. project in 2025 from $650,000 to $842,262. This will reduce the city's estimated required contribution from $265,618, or 23.3% to $73,356 at 6.4%.
Very significant.
That concludes my report for the evening. Take any questions that you have.
Questions or comments for the manager?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Just an easy one. That survey regarding the water pipe coming into your home, really easy to use, really nice setup. It takes, if you can find the water pipe, and you should know where the water pipe is and the shut-off is. If you don't know that, you've got a problem. But, yeah, it's easy to find. It takes about 30 seconds to complete the survey, and then you don't have, you don't waste money having people go out there and knock on your door. So, I prefer them to do that.
Additional comments or questions for the city manager?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bajali.
I think this is appropriate for the city manager. I don't know if it should be this or new business, but, you know, I, the cyber attack in the city of Cleveland, closing down that organization for a week, I just wanted to, I know Cody left, I just wanted to ask you, do you think we're on top of our game when it comes to something like that?
Cody assured me that we're 100% covered. No, not really. Cody assured me that we're very secure. We all, we have, we've talked about this for years, obviously, and we're also cognizant of all these attacks that are going on. We have had a spam and phishing and all that stuff going through our emails. Our staff's been trained on it. We've had a few folks that we had to have a little conversation, make sure they don't click something. But, so, we're very aware of it. We also have a 24/7 monitoring service now that is monitoring our internet, so if there's anything that comes up, we get flagged right away and get notified. So, I think we're as secure as possible, and obviously, we, you know, we'll keep on top of that, that stuff.
Thank you.
Mr. Wantington.
About five weeks ago, I had Putin try to get ahold of me.
Putin did? What do you want?
He was recruiting.
I didn't respond.
He's recruiting.
I think he got drafted.
Additional comments for the city manager? Not we'll move to items of old business. Any items of old business, Commissioners? We'll move to items of new business. I have a little housekeeping here. I'm going to dodge this for tonight. I was going to make a motion to appoint an applicant to the Community Relations Commission, but about five minutes ago, I realized that I'm probably the only Commissioner to have seen that application, and I would prefer that all of you saw the application before I ask you to appoint this person. So, I will, I will have the clerk share that application with the rest of the Commission, and we can make that appointment if you concur at the next meeting. Additional items of new business.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coons.
A couple of quick questions related to community development. So, it's great to see Colleen here. I wanted to commend Colleen and Ms. Grohe for the work that you're doing in that area. One of the things, though, that I wanted a little more information about, particularly as it, and you spoke to this previously, there's a development that will cost between $200,000 and $250,000 per home. Then there's another one you talked about that was about $150,000, right? And so, I was concerned, and we talked about this briefly, about those who can afford anything between 100 to 150,000, right? And it brings to mind the community development block grant money that we have. And I looked at the list of all of the places where that money should be dedicated, and I'm wondering how much flexibility there is in that, right? Because I noticed that there would be a consultant that would be paid $143,000, or I don't know if that person would be paid that, how that would be split up, would that person have an assistant. But, I thought about that in relationship to paying somebody $143,000 and thinking about how far $143,000 goes toward helping people in that category, or people who can't afford even that. So, can you speak to flexibility, or anybody can speak to flexibility as it relates to that pot of money that, that's probably about six categories that I've noticed?
Sure, through the Commission President, I'd be happy to, and I'd be happy to sit down with you or either, any of your colleagues to walk through that. I assure you, it is not a $143,000 salary. That is one portion, and that was reported in the Register today. There are multiple categories within that category of funding.
Okay.
In terms of flexibility, the budget is set for this year. We went through a multi-month process of receiving public comments and hosting meetings within this chamber to get people's input into community development block grant. Could absolutely tee up for next year, re-categorizing or priorities for CDBG dollars in the future.
Okay. Thanks, Colleen.
Additional items of new business, Commissioner?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Murray.
I spoke with you earlier today in changing maybe one of our little procedural rules that we have with the, with our staff, saying through you, Commission President, for us to be able to ask questions. And we talked about dispensing with that. I know it hasn't been around that long. It's been a few years, four or five years, and several Commissioners agree that it's just kind of, it really makes the dialogue with our, with staff sometimes difficult, and we'd like to be able to just have a conversation when we get recognized to have the floor. We'd like to be able to just talk to our, to our, to everyone who works here and make everybody feel a little more comfortable, dispense with the formality a little bit in that regard. So, we're looking to understand how we go about doing that.
I shared, I think I shared with you an email to...
I wasn't able to see my email before the meeting.
One of Mr. Hastings would share with Commissioner Vargo and the rest of the Commission. Your response, Mr. Hastings, that, that procedure, that formality has been around for a lot longer than a few years.
Yeah, it's been around for about 400 years.
But not here at the Sandusky City Commission.
It's embedded in our...
It's embedded in the Roberts Rules of Order.
I'm saying that it hasn't been part of this commission for several years. For people who've been on here, haven't been doing it for 400 years.
There is, there is a procedure that I outlined to the President. You have to submit a resolution in writing. Has to be read at one meeting, and it can only be voted on at the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
His, his response is a little more elaborate than that, a little more forthcoming than that, and I, if you have an opportunity to read your email, I...
Yeah, no, the Roberts Rules and, and Roberts Rules for Dummies also give examples of why that rule is in place.
Well...
And I want to ask you perhaps...
I don't think I need to read Roberts Rules for Dummies. I'm asking, along with at least four other, if not five other Commissioners, that we look into changing that.
I would ask...
So, that's what I'm asking.
I would ask that you read our Law Director's response.
I will, and I was working up until the meeting, and so maybe text me next time you send something important.
My bad.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bajali.
I don't recall where that process was used for years and years and years. It might have been around for 400 years, but I don't recall it ever being used here until I think Mr. Whoopsir came, and he may have brought it from Cleveland. I'm just wondering, does anybody that has more of a history of this than me understand, so you could clarify for us where it even came from, and was it voted on in the first place to enact it at the table?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I can provide a little bit of the history. You just, it wasn't around 10 and a half years ago, and it wasn't around when I first served 15 years ago. But, somewhere, I'm going to say five, six, seven years ago, some staff members started doing that. And I think there was a recognition at the time that, yeah, we probably should have been doing that. It's never something that the Commission voted on. It's never been discussed at this table. I will say that I do think that the formality has a role to play when you get to heated meetings. It's something I would be very cautious about tossing aside. I think about some of the contentious meetings that we've had over the years, not with this body, but in past bodies. And there's a reason for everything that's in Roberts Rules. It may not always be apparent, and maybe it's not appropriate for every community, but that's just a little bit of the history, is I recall. How it, it was very organic.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I just would like, I like Commissioner Murray's word, organic. I'd like our conversations to be more organic with everyone out front who has, who we have questions for. And sometimes, when you ask a question, what happens is the next, you want to have a follow-up because it opens another question when they have a response. And when you go to do that, sometimes in going through you or leadership, takes it that time to step in and answer or get involved in the conversation when it is my floor and it's the opportunity to talk. So, I would like to make sure we have that opportunity.
Additional comments or questions?
Mr. Chair.
Oh, go ahead.
Mine's really quick. If this was never voted on, can we just stop doing it?
Yeah, no, our, our, our Rules of Order do adopt Roberts Rules of Order, so it is
something, where it really comes into play, and it's something I have witnessed in other, not in Sandusky, but in another community, where a councilman uses the opportunity to harangue an employee of the city. And the purpose of the rules, to make sure the president of the commission is always in control, that he's there to establish order. And if it's, if they're asking for information, that's one thing. If it's an attempt to embarrass or, or yell at, or somehow or another, get someone to cry, and I've seen that. You know, the purpose is for the president of the commission to be in charge, and that's why Roberts Rules has that in there.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. White.
I must have been on another planet, Mr. Murray, because I've served, this is my fifth term, and this just come about a few years ago. You know, and I was like wondering at the time, where the hell did this come from? You know, they threw you back off the sidewalk. It's like, you know, I think if you, if I see Mr. Chairman, you say, Mr. Wantington, I have the floor, okay? Then I ask Mr. Klein a question, and he bounces it back to Mr. Murray, through you, Mr. President. I mean, I don't see any wars that we've had, you know, in my, in the terms that I've been on. I must be on another planet, but I think if you get recognized, you got the floor.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I think I'm agreeing with Mr. Wantington that it was just something that evolved some years ago.
Then there was never a vote on it, so could we take a vote and be done with it? There was never no vote. I can guarantee that. I've been sitting there. I don't, you know, I don't need...
That's what I said, yeah.
The Rules of Order do adopt Roberts Rules of Order, and it isn't there.
Well, listen, we're at Sandusky. I'll leave it at that.
Mr. Wantington, I appreciate your comments. I think if we're going to make this change, my suggestion is that we do it according to our charter. And I think Mr. Hastings had indicated there is a process to do that. And if, and if there is a majority of Commissioners who would like to do it, how about let's just follow the process?
Did we have a process? Do we vote on this? I must miss a meeting. I haven't missed any meetings in 12 years.
I think when we established, when someone way before any of us being here established our charter, it was embedded in the charter that we were following Roberts Rules of Order. It's my understanding.
If I can correct that just a little bit, Mr. President, it's in our Rules of Order, the Sandusky Rules of Order.
Not in Roberts, yeah.
Not, not the charter.
Okay.
And the Commission is allowed to change the Rules of Order, but there is a process to do that.
And all I'm suggesting, Mr. Wantington, is that we follow the process instead of just deciding it's something we're going to throw out the window today.
I can wait until next meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coons.
I didn't think we'd have to have this conversation again, but it's appropriate because it makes me think of a previous occasion. And Mr. Hastings said something that was really, really important. He said if someone tries to harangue someone else or to, the real question is, who determines when that's happening?
Yeah.
Who determines when somebody is being polite, asking a basic question, when that is happening? Who gets to decide?
That is the President's decision.
Okay. And so, in this particular case, Mr. President, I didn't hear that decided. Like, it was decided that if you ask a question and you're just trying to get feedback, and if I remember correctly, I was trying to get feedback from all the Commissioners. And so I had to go back to the original Commissioner just to say, I just would like to know, you know, the thought process. That's all I asked, but it turned into something else.
Well, I, and I'm, Mr. Chair, I'm not saying throw out decorum, for goodness sakes, and respect. And I would be the first one to tell someone to sit down if they were being inappropriate. So, I just think I want to be able to have dialogue with everybody in a free-flowing conversation when we have questions, and that's all I'm asking. And I feel that that is stifling and unnecessary and really almost a little archaic.
Commissioner Crable.
Who's drawing this language?
Excuse me?
Who's going to draw up this language?
Any volunteers?
Well, I'm, I'm asking because if there's some legalities here or something, should, should our Law Director not be directed to put together that language, or...
Is that, is that the procedure, Mr. Hastings, is what it asks?
Under our charter, I respond to the city manager. If he directs me to draw up that language, I will.
I got you.
Thank you.
On the list.
We'll have it at the next meeting.
Thank you very much.
Chain of command clear. Chain of command is said clear.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coons.
One more comment. And I thought about this because of a conversation that I had with Chief Oliver, who's doing an excellent job, by the way. And there was one thing that he said that I absolutely agreed with. He said he believes in accountability and transparency. I am the exact same way. When I'm talking to folks, I am willing to stand in what I'm standing in and ask folks to come to the table and talk about it, not beat anybody up, right? State the facts. If it's not a fact, I'm always willing to listen so I can be corrected. I didn't know that, because that's happened once here, in fact, when I said, oh, thank you for giving me that, right? It didn't come back up again until I said, and you were absolutely right. You remember that? So, so I don't have any problem admitting when I'm wrong, but I do want to be able to have conversations with my colleagues about how we can move better to serve the community. But I feel like the community needs to hear the conversation. They need to know why we think the way we do, how we came up with that particular solution. So, I just wanted to put that on the record that that's, that's who I am, and I appreciate other people who are like Chief Oliver.
Excellent. Additional items of new business? If not, are there any comments on any item that pertains to city business? Please step to the podium and tell us your name and address and your comments.
Greetings, Commissioners. Tom Lamarka, 20648 Street. I've sat back and hadn't said anything for a while, so I thought I'd make my presence known. Robert sent me. A number of the stakeholders or residents of the Chesapeake are concerned and would like to see a four-way stop at the Decatur and Market Street intersection because of the extended beds on many of the trucks these days. They can't see, and I can't see, at that intersection clearly what the traffic's flow is. You start to pull out, next thing you know, somebody's running into you. So, as a thought, Mr. Klein or whomever's in charge. The new pavement on Venice Road is fantastic. It was long overdue, and I certainly appreciate it, as I'm sure the West End does. However, there is one glitch out there. Just west of the overpass portion of Route 2 on the westbound lane, there is a huge hump. It's high enough that it about jolted me or ejected me off my motorcycle a couple of days ago, and I went out there and checked it again this morning, and it's still rised, or however you want to put it. It's still a traffic hazard. And somebody's going to get it because it's right across from Fox Cycle. They were painting out there today, so if something could be done about that. On the Columbus Avenue Street Skate Project, that's kind of interesting that we had no sewers to your family's house on Market Street, I guess it would be. And I'm wondering, I'm still wondering what we're going to find when you start cracking and digging and getting down below that surface, because that hump is there. We know there were railroad tracks and trolley cars and all that. I think you're going to run into rails and, and bigger expenses, and the $5 million is not going to be enough. And I don't know where you're going to get the additional monies if you do need it. But I've been told by some of the property owners, also known as stakeholders downtown, that the water and sewer laterals are not part of that project, and I just want to make sure, is that right or wrong? Are they going to get new water and sewer lines with this street? going to get new water and sewer lines with this streets, streetscape project to feed their buildings? I don't know. Do you know?
Mr. Klein.
Yes, the, the water service lines are to be replaced because I'm, I believe the water service lines are to be, to be replaced to ensure that all the lead is out of those lines up to the building. But the sanitary and storm laterals are not included in the project.
Why would that not be placed? It's 100 years old, aren't they?
I, I mean, I'm not an engineer. I don't know why they're not included in it.
So, why would we be cutting up a, a good roadway right now that's serving the community and dig it all up, put in a water line, but not put in a sanitary line? I'm just, I mean, it kind of baffles me because then we're going to have a problem with it later on, and we're going to have to destroy $5 million worth of new infrastructure that you put in. So, if you could take a look at that before you start work in September and figure out who missed that and maybe solve that problem, because that's a big problem. If it made a $88,000 change for a couple of residences on Market Street, what's it going to cost us on Columbus Avenue? Then, the other thing that bothers me is the Justice Center and the, the discussion at the last meeting on the Certificates of Participation, the COP, as they call it. And, and what that really says is, the city's going to sell the Justice Center property to a group of investors, and then the citizens, the city of Sandusky, is going to lease that property back so that we can make room for more debt coming in that we don't know is coming, or for another project that we don't have on the table yet. But, and the end result is, we've sold our house or our building to some investors for the cost of the renovation. Got nothing for the building or the property, but an opportunity to lease back our original property. That's totally different from what we did here. At least here, we have a lease with an option to buy with a set price. The COP project is a bad project for the city and the citizens, in my opinion. And I think if you put it before the citizens, and they were aware that they were going to lose that piece of property over creative financing, that the uproar would actually fill this building from top to bottom. And I really wish more of the citizens would come down here and at least bend your minds a little bit with some of the silly things that I think about. But, you know, what's a couple million dollars more going to cost us on this one here and Justice Center? And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lamarka. I don't see any other public, so I'm going to guess we're not getting any more public comments. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move
We are adjourned.